All right, welcome to planning board. It is April tenth seven P M. We'll see we work session with the work session like fiscal electric in this week for a work session on Tuesday. Everyone have an opportunity read minutes and changes modifications. Motion to approve the minutes. Move second. All favor. Okay, first on the agenda this evening, we've got bending canalway commons monument sign. We've go through this one. That's easier. Any additional comments on this one? It's. You know, anybody looking this is new monument sign near the entrance on Sealy Way between the ski company building and the other. Our personal building.
Um, isn't it gonna look like it's that that's the address on Bridge Street and or is that the Sealy Road address? I think it just say Sealy.
You think that's.
If it's not facing bridge at all, that where someone will okay.
Yeah, perpendicular bridge. On Sealy set way back.
Enough so that no one's gonna.
I mean, you don't see it until you're on Sealy Drive.
Okay.
Basically, yeah.
That okay. That's my question, thanks.
All right. No other comment, questions? Motion to approve the site plan dated four, three, twenty twenty five as of release to the addition of a monument sign only. This board has reviewed the underdog planning board referral of April ninth, twenty twenty five, which determine that said referral will have no significant adverse inter community. Inter community or county wide implications. This board has reviewed the S E A F about the hit date eleven, twenty twenty four. And grants a negative secret declaration for this on listed action. This is a modification of site plan for canalway commons as granted by the planning board. Four twenty seven, twenty twenty three and subsequently amended on sixth age, twenty twenty three. One, 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 eleven, twenty twenty four and twelve, five, twenty twenty four. All findings and conditions, the aforementioned approvals and modifications remain in full force and effect, except specifically modified herein. And intended to be only the addition of a monument sign. Motion to approve sign. Play second, Kathy, all favor? Great, thank you. Lemoine. This one. This is the civilian. Give a. For five minute update.
Uh, yeah, so the comments were minor with our last submittal. Uh, we had the photometric to review. There was one hotspot. We don't have to flip through the drawings, but it was located in that top corner of our plaza and we adjusted the lights there. Was a concentration of the. Um, lights that we have for the stairway there and the pole light, so it was creating a hotspot. We can elevate the light. Still keep a safe transition down the staircase, but take that number under eight. And then another comment for the landscape plan. So we completed that. Um, the schedule was previously included, but we filled out the entire plan identifying which plants are going where. And then we included cut sheets for the individual lighting pieces as well. Otherwise, there were no other changes.
There. Questions on this one? The motion to approve site plan in March twenty seven, twenty five, following findings and condition finding. The point is received a site plans approval for many improvements to its large college campus site over many years time. Improvements present presented herein fit with the overall and ongoing improvement plans for the campus. Uh, this approval supplements. This rule supplements the prior approvals granted by this board. And is not intended to modify or substitute any other prior approvals or site plans, except as specifically shown herein as related. It relates to the interior campus walkway, which is the site lighting, landscaping, and civilian closet. This board has reviewed the underdog becoming planning board of Pearl March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, which determine that said referral will have no significant diverse inter community or county wide implications. This board has reviewed the S A F applicant data two twenty seven, twenty twenty five and grants a negative secret declaration to this on listed action. Conditions. This approval is made with the condition that this approval is for plans and others submitted site documents, site plan documents that have been granted by the planning person. And the applicant requires that all of work shown be completed by the applicant or a person who has a requirement certain clients to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions or deletions to the scope of work or materials for the site plan documents. Are not approved and are subject to further site plan review. We shall into town in the late code section one ninety two, that's one twenty two. Motion to approve Kathy second play all in favor? You know, thank you. Next up, we have forty forty and forty forty four and new court apps or apps. This is simple reapproval. I don't know if they're not pretty present, but you're wonderful, welcome. Um, this was back. This was a subdivision plan that we did back in twenty twenty three. Um, the application timeframe has lapsed, but it's just a simple. Reapproval. There have been no modifications or changes to the site plan. Last, does anybody have any question?
Alex Samray. Oh, what? S A M O R A Y.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There anything you want to share?
No, I just brought an extra copy for signing.
All right, so for those four members here, I'll get to the point, but there is a. The original rule included in the minutes here, which I'm not going to read. Those will reference. Just so that all the conditions and findings are listed. Um, this is a motion for reapproval of the subdivision plan dated ten sixteen, twenty twenty three for this project. The reapproval is required. The applicant did not meet the timeframes for completing the filing of subdivision map for the town code. This board finds that there has been no change in the code or any significant changes to the condition of property or areas since this approval is granted. Accordingly, the subdivision plan dated ten sixteen, twenty twenty three is reapproved with all the findings and conditions of the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Will be created by reference here. Further, inasmuch as the site plan approval dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Was conditioned upon the applicant filing the subdivision map as per the subdivision approval. This board further confronts of the site plan approval of March fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Same findings and conditions as the original approval. And with the further finding that there has been no change in the code or anything that changes the condition of property or areas that's cited for granted. For clarification, the full approval on site and subdivision dated March fourteen, twenty twenty four is included in. This.
Yeah, things will stay there. Yep. You do not.
Peace, so I will move the reproof for second. Kevin, one favor. Great. Except we have Shake Shack.
Representative for Shake Shack online. Yep. Good evening. My name is Matt Lester. I'm one of the property owners here at the Shake Check location. My engineer, Patrick CheeDee, was unable to make it tonight. I apologize in his absence. Um, the uh, plan that you're showing is, I believe, uh, absent of the DOT approved plan, which shows a sidewalk extending. Uh, along Bridge Street to a um, to a shoulder. Uh, but the good news is we were able to communicate with the DOT and the town. Appreciate everyone's support and coordinating this with the DOT. Uh, and we finalized the plan that the DOT is comfortable with. I think they shared that with the town this afternoon, but prior to this meeting from Jeffrey Deep to Derek White, I believe. Um, hopefully you have that plan. And our.
We didn't get a plan. We just saw that it was approved.
Okay, our anticipation.
Derek might have done a plan, but he wasn't the man these days.
Sorry about that. It was a fluid. It was fluid. We had the DOT move quickly, which is a. Uh, always a good accomplishment, so that they were great to work with us and I believe in Chris's comments, so. Our, our plan is to advance and construct that sidewalk. I'd like to bring up the point that it does. Uh, terminate into a shoulder at our property line. Um, as long as the town's comfortable with that, in certain cases, we terminate into a future connection at the neighboring property. For that said neighbor to connect to at some future date, it doesn't, this doesn't do that. Um, so we're fine to, you know, perform the work and.
Matt, do you have the drawing on your computer that you could share?
Uh, let me check. I apologize. I'm kind of working remotely here. Um, I do, I should. Adam shared it with me. Bear, bear with me.
Did you terminate into the shoulder or was that just?
Yeah, Jeff, we, we questioned that. I'm gonna share my screen. Um, I do have it. Uh, I guess I gotta send a request. Bear with me. Uh, yeah, we did communicate with Jeff deep that when we questioned, is this something that you would prefer us to do? Um, and Jeff said that is done all the time and they're comfortable with it. Uh, you can see the, can you, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so this is the um, extension, oop, green. Sorry, usually it's red. Um, this is the uh, the sidewalk that we're talking about. Uh, property line is roughly there and we have a, a stop for the visually impaired. Um, and it terminates into the shoulder. Um, the fine with us. That's what the DOT was comfortable with and recommended or commented on, I guess. Typically, we like to, you know, stop this at a future connection point. You know, to be received by the neighbor, not to cause any more work for anyone else, but I just wanted to bring that point up. Um. We are fine to perform the work that the DOT has uh, approved. And we, we can put it to bed from there if that's all that's.
I appreciate that if somebody was on a bike or something, they get down, get on the, you know, on the bridge. Is there a language that we can incorporate that, you know, any future extension shall eliminate that connection on the bridge?
I, I, I think that. When the time comes and it'll sidewalk design, it wouldn't say. You know, at that time.
I don't think it matters how it turned. It's really Jack would probably want the DOT would want them to close that off at that time, I imagine. They just for safety issues.
Right, but for now.
Yeah, that's fine with them.
Yeah, Jeff's fine with it. Yeah.
What um?
I think actually.
What's our condition exactly on the sidewalk?
Uh, to work with DOT to, to.
Design.
Yeah, and then the landscaping, which I, the landscaping's also been approved, hasn't it?
Yep, landscaping's been approved. Uh, we discussed the uh, grading and the swell. Uh, DOT Jeff deep signed off on all of that. This was the plan. He was comfortable to approve. We're fine to do this as per, you know, I think that. The approval was really us just coordinating with the DOT. There wasn't really a requirement to do this, but we. Were able to come to a conclusion and we're happy to construct it at our expense.
What is the, the material between the sidewalk and kind of the edge of Bridge Street was bridge's curve, is it?
Right here, you're talking about the, the shoulder?
Yeah.
Uh, I, that would just be what's existing. I believe it's grass.
Okay.
So Matt, can you get us your new landscaping plan? And um, if that new site plan with the sidewalk design wasn't sent to Derek yet, can you get that to us as well?
Sure, the, the landscaping plan isn't new. It was what was approved. Um, the land, this was just a separate. Uh, you know, request of the planning board to communicate with the DOT. To determine if there was an opportunity to put a sidewalk in. We did do that. And uh, they determined it was possible, so we're, we're comfortable to move forward with that. But as far as the landscaping plan, I'm not sure if this plan is our approved landscaping plan, but it definitely was approved and. That was what's under construction now. I'll, I'll certainly uh, resend that, recirculate that to everyone's attention.
Yeah, I think that was one of the um, conditions as well, because the original landscaping that came in, uh, DOT didn't like it because of some of the site distance issues. So I think, I mean, I think you guys worked with them a while ago with their landscape architects and I'm not sure if we have that final.
And Matt, do you also have a grading plan?
Yeah, we here, if you, can you see, can you still see my screen?
Yep.
So we, these are our stamp plans that I'm sharing now, so we went through the grades with the DOT and. As you can see, our, our sidewalk is shown on them. Jeff signed off on this. Let me see if there's a landscaping plan here as well. There it is. So this is the landscaping plan that we said, we worked with DOT. We added these islands. Uh, and we, we bolstered our landscaping in the islands. Um, and this was also. Approved.
So Matt, if you can get us like two paper copies stamped and signed and um, those copies, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And then your next step, you'll be applying for a highway work permit from DOT?
Yeah, I believe that's the course of action. I'm gonna have my engineer reach back out to Jeff and just coordinate on what the appropriate permits requirements are. Um, I, I don't expect this sidewalk would hold anything up from an operation standpoint with Shake Shack. We'll advance. This sidewalk as fast as we can, you know, weather permitting, um, and we're happy to do it, but I just wanted to make sure. Uh, this wouldn't hold up an unrelated business operation. But again, we're, we're happy to do it.
Is there something you anticipate happening now while you still have the contractors out there doing the site work?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's gonna cost me less to have them not mobilize twice, so we're, we're gonna roll them right into this. We're. You know, with all their concrete work, et cetera, so.
Okay, that's great on our end.
Yep. Yeah, well, obviously we've got to make sure we have the, the appropriate DOT permits and if they need, you know, some work safely. Uh, uh, timeline, you know, if it's off peak hours, we'll, we'll coordinate with them on how they want to handle that, but we'll make sure we get it done.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I must have missed. We're not conditioning this with. Certificate of occupancy?
We're not any action tonight. They're just coming back to update the board, which is one of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Last May.
So as, you know, this will be completed as part of the overall project. This is a modification to that site plan.
Yep, and the building permit.
And building permit, so it will all be completed as part of that certificate of occupancy.
So, so no, no, uh, excuse me, I, I can't have this hold up a certificate of occupancy because the DOT. Operates on their timeline. We will work with them. I'll bond it. But I cannot, I cannot have this offsite work. It, it's, it's not onsite work. It, it has no bearing on the occupancy of the building. This was an add on after the fact. It wasn't part of the requirement. The requirement of my approval was just to communicate with the DOT. So I don't feel it's fair to now reel this in to hold up.
So just, I'm trying to understand how. How we know when this will be completed? I mean, you, you say that you'll be out with the contractors onsite doing this work concurrently.
If, if you'd like, I, I'll put a bond up, uh, if that's easier. I'm not sure how the, the town handles their bonded work, but. Uh, this is a forty thousand dollar uh, cost. This isn't, this isn't significant from the grand scheme of things, so. We're just gonna go ahead and contract the work with our current contractor. I could show you proof of uh, contract executed. Um, I'm not sure what else. Uh, we need to do, but I'd be happy to bond it, so you know the, the money's there if I don't perform it uh, within.
An idea of timeline from DOT and then we can talk about all of this.
Sure.
I mean, if the contractors are still out there now, my understanding is after all the site work gets done, you're still gonna have contractors inside the building, so it seems like there's time to go.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we don't have any, we don't have any uh, intent to leave this.
When, when is your anticipated opening?
So they're looking at August, so this is, this is moving pretty quick.
Well, they should be able to do the sidewalk, you know, we're done. I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're happy to do it. I, I believe me, there's, there's. I, I'd rather get it done and complete the job, so.
Yeah, if you guys can get your highway work permit application in as soon as possible and then we'll see if we can get Jeff to kind of push things along.
And again, you anticipate this work being done this year, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, that, this is.
So we're just gonna put a date of, of well, thirty or, you know, twelve thirty one, twenty five.
Okay, so let me, let me suggest this. If there were um, just a motion to modify. The approval to add the sidewalk detail that's been approved by the DOT as, as part of the site plan of plan approval. And it would be completed no later than whatever date and as soon as feasible, and that way it's. Yeah, it's not gonna hold up the C of O, but it's, it's will be part of site plan. If like a year passes and it's never done, it would be a violation of site plan.
I, I'm happy to, again, I could, happy to bond it. We, we just can't let this hold up a CFO for the operation of that business, which I, I think that's what you're saying, so I appreciate that.
So do you want, what, what date do we want?
Twelve thirty one.
Twelve thirty one? I'll get that. Yeah.
And this was just approved today, so I apologize. Uh, I'll get, we could coordinate offline and work with the DOT and get the permits and the appropriate paperwork into the town.
Please do.
Yep.
All right, so. I will make a motion to modify the approval and this sidewalk detail as approved by the DOT. As part of the site line approval dated to be determined or to be. To be completed by twelve thirty one, twenty twenty five and as soon as feasible.
And this detail is dated today?
Yeah, Derek White has.
Today.
Approved by DOT today. I don't think that's the date.
Okay, we'll just put it as approved by DOT.
But you're, you're comfortable with the landscape and the sideline question, or is that still open?
There was the DOT landscape architects were looking at it because it's in the state right of, so yeah, they signed on.
Yeah. I will move second, all in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everybody. Have a great evening. Sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Thank you.
Take care.
Last up, we got Northland. This is for concept review combining. Fortune columnar and northern riverbank to create their tax parcel.
Or Tim Corrigan, I knew he was in Romans Lancer Bank. Um, we were previously in here for the zone change of this piece in here from industrial to business transitional. Um, now we're here for the subdivision of the existing um, residential property here. We're gonna create a lot three A here and lot two A will be here. This is the remaining industrial here, so this will be a vacant parcel for future development.
Couple of things we're gonna look for. Uh, we need to look at all easements.
Yep.
Here, here. It was communicated that. Um, I'm not sure that there's an easement from. One to three.
Correct. I, I talked to Jamie about that, so we'll, we'll take care of that. That's not a big deal.
And then the lot line that you're showing here will need to kind of align to the parking stalls in the drive aisle.
Yes.
In there, uh, we don't want to have any of the parking stalls overhanging the property lines. Not useful.
But, but, but.
No, understood.
May I? And I can't see where our lots, which is lot one right now.
Lot one A is over here.
One, it's one A.
Three A is over here.
And, and this one is, this front one? So you.
Three A.
Three, okay. So there's no current easement from lot one A to lot three A.
Correct.
Um, but you're going to do that in declaration of easement for that.
Yep.
And then. The emergency. Easement from lot three A to the Northwood lot.
We've wanted to the two A.
It's, it's part of this, it's part of this lot, which is three A.
No. Yeah, so the drive aisle, it's actually on seven A. Go up to two A.
Oh, I, I have my. No, so there's no current easement from lot three, from lot one A to three A, just the front right. And now there is one though, from one A to the Northwood lot. Correct.
Now. D eight on it?
Yep.
And. I just need that right to, to you.
Okay.
Um. If it's a declaration of easement. I mean, it's, it probably does not run to the benefit of the town, but maybe okay, the plans file. The, the easement that you're going to provide the declaration of easement. A new one, should it say that it's in connection with subdivision approval? And that it can't be changed.
Okay.
Unless the town consents to it.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's part of what you were doing with part of the subdivision. And then um. Label it on the map also.
Yes.
So these modifications will want. There's gonna be two step here. We're also gonna call for the public hearing.
Yep.
Which will serve for two weeks.
Sorry, I heard from Matt during the meeting, so. He, it's not on the agenda for Monday for the town board, but it will be on the twenty eighth, so he, he was asking us to do the public hearing the first week, the first meeting in May.
So which is the checking on the T V A, can we get subdivision first for the zone change?
Okay. Our meeting is when? May please.
Twenty four.
Four.
Our board is the twenty eighth.
Okay, so. Yes, so the, the town board resolution is going to um, say that. They're going to give the approval intention on the subdivision being completed. So we.
What happens if we do the subdivision first?
No.
Gotcha. Just asking a question.
But, but they have to personally kind of authorize it. And then.
And then we.
And then we can do the subdivision and then it becomes self confatuating.
So one, then do the public hearing on the. Well, it had to be the first meeting, having.
Well, we can't do the public hearing. We just can't make a decision. But I mean, I, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of interest, so we probably want to just get rid of it in.
So why don't, why don't we do that?
We do the, the first meeting in um, May, that'll be the most time to get the easements and everything in place.
That would be even better, sure.
Prove it. That way we're in line for approvals on.
Will those easements be specific to the emergency access open gate? Do they have leg with regarding that?
Um, it shouldn't because in theory what we're doing is we're. The gate only is in reference to this. The easements that we're talking about is so that they can cross access through here from lot one to three A.
So you'll also need one. From the extension two A.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be like, become like a reciprocal easement.
There is one on two between two A, right? Both gates to be installed for emergency.
Yes, but now we need the one over yonder. Yeah.
So in nature, my question is, what, what else? The, the emergency gate is to be reviewed. Is that one exists already?
Yeah.
Make sure that's there. We need one from one A to three A for that parking lot.
Yep, left, yep.
Then the little leg on the left is gonna be combined with the Northwood property.
Right, north.
Yep, need an easement at that point to get from that piece onto three A.
Understood, okay. So, so emergency access, are we talking decides emergency access, it's emergency vehicles, EMS? Or is this for like uh, emergency went by the property owner?
Uh, emergency moved by the property owner?
I will know when I look at it.
Okay. I just, I just. To make clear, that's all. I just need to get through quickly, so.
Is this west? Is this?
Yes.
So the easement from lot two A on the on the west side to lot three A.
I ask the. I'm the owner.
You are?
Yes. Why do we need this emergency gate anyway? Why can't we just get, we got two means of ingress and egress from Northwood Business Center. It really, it was approved without this additional. Residential access from Colomer. Why don't we just? Close it off, keep it as a residential access road. And not have this gate. This gate could be just a problem.
Do you want to just get rid of the gate and close that whole?
Yeah.
Access point off?
Yeah, what's the point?
I mean. You have your two means.
Yeah, we got two means on both, both facilities.
Which one are you talking about? Sorry. Eliminate that one.
Yeah.
Landscaper write off and whatever.
Yeah, there's no, we already have the two means of ingress and egress from.
I mean, I, yeah. We thought you wanted it, so.
No, it's, to me, it's just.
It exists right now, right? I mean, it exists right now.
No. There's no gate right now, but the the driveway.
Yeah, it exists.
But. Based on our conversation in the previous meeting, I'm. Essentially unable to use the additional land. Uh, on lot one, what what was, with the, you know, A, we did the apartments.
Yep.
That land and back is unusable, essentially. So I don't need to access it and if you want to keep residential traffic. On this driveway, then just close off that to the commercial area. And we'll just keep the other road commercial.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, it makes, I think from planning standpoint, it makes more sense.
I don't think we're married in the emergency gate. I think it's.
We need an extinguishment on that.
You can extinguish that easement.
Entirely and just do a new one.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially what's happening here is that. This easement is just going to affect. This lot and this lot. And the reason why we even, the reason why we even need subdivision is because pursuant to. The town code, as I understand, we can't even build here.
Right.
So we have to have, it has to be a separate lot.
Yep.
That's why we're doing it. That's why we're here.
No, I mean, you're doing it all the right way. I mean, taking emergency gate. Aspecting that out, close that entrance, show it all closed off. I think we're fine with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, he's, he can adjust the property line and. Comments, so do we want to call for the public hearing now or wait till our next meeting?
We'll wait because then we'll have hopefully more information. Hopefully in front for it, you know, subject to, subject to.
Astro, so.
True. Call it.
So, right.
We're going to see them again and then we'll. So the deadline to get in all of that information for the public hearing is what if we do it in the fourth, twenty twenty-four, whatever.
Right, so. Why don't we do this? I'll make the motion to have a public hearing. Or is the center subdivision? For. May eighth, no.
Yes.
Yes, May eighth. And we'll do it at seven oh five. So, eight, public hearing.
Yeah, we're getting by the twenty-fourth.
Get everything in by the twenty-fourth. We hopefully know where we stand with the town board by then. And get the public hearing taken care of.
Did you get any county comments?
The twenty eighth.
Yes, but, right, deadlines twenty-fourth for then.
Just for him to be.
So, yeah.
By the eighth.
Yeah.
By the eighth.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you guys get any county comments? Because I didn't get any.
Hmm.
There is a comment on the site. No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I just want to make sure we address the county comments up before the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Do you want to just email it to me? That's totally fine. We'll just take a look at it.
I think, no, I think they probably sent this way back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because this.
Okay, not, not, not a problem. You don't have to, you know, carry now, just.
Copying it.
Uh, got it, right.
Okay.
Applicant must show viable provisions for parking either onsite or in a permanent easement to support future use of existing buildings on proposed lot one A.
That was a modification or a comment?
That was a modification. Would you have on there?
Which we, yes, like again, as we're doing is the time of an easement through here.
Right. Viable provision for parking. On either, either onsite or in a permanent easement to support future use of existing buildings on proposed lot one A. And I can send you this.
Yeah, perfect.
And the other thing was about the SWIP. But that's their point of statement. And what's the date on that?
November thirteenth.
Great. Public hearing, all material on by the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Even four.
That was good. I appreciate it. Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, that is all we have for this evening. The.
Additional business.
Motion to close the meeting.
Andy first.